I'd like to call the meeting of the Wasaw Town Council Board. We welcome everyone here tonight. And Mr. Hall is going to be recording our swearing in. It's the first time we've ever had that on tape. No, two years ago, whoever was uh whoever was going in then I think it was. But we'll do that in just a few minutes. Mr. Carter, good to see you tonight. If you will, Brother Danny Burns, our pastor from the Wasaw Seminole God. And he's now he's now probably beginning to be the longest-serving pastor at that church and want to continue serving. I thank him out of that as part of our community now for seventeen, nineteen years. He's going to give our invocation tonight and greet us. And Brother Burns, if you will.
All right, thank you, ma'am. First of all, I'd like to say thanks to each and every one of you today for your service to our community. So many lives depend and count on all that you all do. And we appreciate it. God bless all of you tonight. And also, I would like to say that, dear, this year, this is the first month. We're starting a brand-new year. Please, if the council sees anything that Wasaw Seminole God can do, maybe make y'all's lives a little better, our community a little better, let us know, folks. We're here to serve and we want to help out. God knows the challenges that you guys faced this year with the road construction and everything that's going on. Certainly, as Minister of the Gospel, I've done things with the Lord and without Him. And I sure rather do things with Him than without Him.
Right.
So we're going to be praying for you. And our thing at the church so far this year is we're really asking God for a good year, for our community, for our church, for all these families. We've had a lot of bad times the last few years. Hey, let's start this one off with the Lord's favor and with His blessing in our lives. I know you've heard this a lot of times. The Scripture tells us in 1 Timothy 2:1, the apostle Paul said, "I exhorte therefore that first of all supplications, prayers, intercession, and giving of thanks be made for all men, for kings, and for all that are in authority, that we may lead a quiet and peaceable life in all godliness and honesty; for this is good and acceptable in the sight of God, our Savior, who will have all men to be saved and to come to the knowledge of the truth." Let's pray this afternoon. Father, we are so thankful today for our community. God, we're so thankful for this council. Lord, for these that you, through people, God, have put into these places, these roles that they play for our lives and for our community, Lord. We pray, God, and thank you that you're our Creator, our Sustainer, and our Redeemer. And we worship you and we give you the glory, Lord. And we ask, oh, God, that your favor will be upon this community as never before. We pray that this will be a place that will flourish, Lord, that folks will want to come and raise their families, build their lives right here in Wasaw, Florida. We thank you tonight, Lord, for your presence now. And God give these the strength in their souls, their spirits, and their minds, Lord, as bless their families all the year long. Bless this year unto us, Lord. We ask it in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Please remain standing, Mr. Paul, please.
Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor Burns. And I don't know what your schedule might demand of you. If you need to leave, you're welcome to stay with us, but if you need.
I'll have to leave a little while.
Oh, thank you. I believe that, well, our council is still the same members that we were before, but before we get to the swearing in, I think that we adopt the consent agenda and approve the minutes from last meeting. Sometimes that is different because if one of us had been replaced, any one of the own person did not adopt and do these things, then we'd have to do that. So that's just the order that it does. So the chair would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda, which includes the approval of the agenda, the minutes from last meeting, the reconcile bank statements, and the minutes from the fire department. And they they did not meet, so there's nothing there to approve.
I'll make the motion. We accept.
We have a motion to approve the consent agenda. It's our second.
Our second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? How you vote, Ms. Carter?
Yes.
Ms. Carter?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. All right. At this time, we turn the meeting over to our attorney, Mr. Carter, and he's going to he's going to perform the ceremonies.
Absolutely. If each of three of you will join me up front, we'll we'll get this done. But would you like to do it one at a time? We'll do our hands on the Bible one at a time, but sometimes people like to do it as a group.
Yeah.
Your presence.
I'm going to get my phone.
Okay, I'm good with the group.
I'm good with the group. You're good with the group.
Just do it one time.
And is somebody can can you get a picture?
Well, I can't get a picture. Well, I can get a picture, sure.
Or maybe Margaret could on the phone. She's getting she's getting her phone now.
I will do that.
You want to make one too?
Got $12,000 with the photographic gear in my car out there. I'm going to take it with a cellphone.
That's why.
Where you going to do it, right there, Jeff?
Yes, sir, we'll just get right here in a second. If y'all all just come over here and then we'll do each one at a time, so you can wear your hand on the Bible. Would you like to do it all that way?
Well, either way, we can do it group, we can do it one time.
Okay. Is the group finally on?
Yes.
All right. All right, if you want, we'll get you on there. Y'all go ahead and raise your right hands for me. All right. Repeat after me and I'll break this up as we go. I do solemnly swear and affirm
I do solemnly swear and affirm
that I will support, protect, and defend
that I will support, protect, and defend
the Constitution and government of the United States
the Constitution and government of the United States
and of the state of Florida
and of the state of Florida
that I am duly qualified to hold office
that I am duly qualified to hold office
under the Constitution of the state
under the Constitution of the state
and that I will will and faithfully
and I will will and faithfully
perform the duties of Wasaw Town Council member
of Wasaw Town Council
on which I am now about to re-enter
on which I am now about to re-enter
so help me God.
so help me God.
All right, congratulations.
Thanks, sir.
Yes, sir.
Appreciate it.
One more time.
Thank you. Congratulations to you and to you again. Thank you.
It's Margaret. So they can sign. That's all right. Margaret, we had it all planned.
Good to see you. Good night.
Bill, I hope you begin to feel better soon.
We're going to get it there.
Okay, sir. All right, back to our agenda. The first order of business is the reorganization of council. We need to select a mayor, a mayor pro team, and liaisons for this council. Do you want to handle this part? Should I continue with it?
I'm not supposed to lead any portion.
Okay, all right, I'm happy to. Okay, the chair will the chair will receive a motion for the position of the mayor of the town. And we reorganize after each election. Okay, so the mayor, the chair will select would would receive a nomination for the position of mayor.
Well, I don't see no, if it ain't broken, I don't see no use in change. So I would say keep it the same as it was, or it's been going good, and that would be my recommendation.
Okay, so that's, can you make that as a motion?
And I'll make it as a motion.
Okay, that, does that even, is that?
That you will remain
We're working on mayor, okay.
Mayor.
Mr. Watsonham has nominated myself to be the mayor. Is there a second or another nomination for someone else?
I second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? How you vote, Ms. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Watsonham?
Yes.
And the chair will vote yes. And I will say thank you again. Probably next to being mayor, my wife and passion in our church of being the mayor of Wasaw is one of the one of the things that I enjoy as much as anything in the world. I enjoy being involved with our town.
Well, usually when you enjoy what you do, a good job. Well, that's normal.
Okay, we will now select a mayor pro team. That's who's who's used shadowed that of the mayor and largely entail conducting the meetings when the mayor is absent and being authorized to be on our checking account of checks and documents. So is there a nomination for vice mayor or mayor pro team?
I nominate Carol West as vice mayor, pro team.
Okay, we have a nomination for Mrs. West to continue as mayor pro team. Is there a second or another nomination?
I second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? How you vote, Mr. Watsonham?
Yes.
Ms. Carter?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. And I'm sure that she will will continue to serve. I have not discussed this with anyone, but I'm sure that she will.
And mayor, I'd like to interject. Had she been here, she would have handled that first one for you if you could have passed the gavel. I meant to tell you that.
Yes, okay.
As mayor pro team.
Okay. That's good enough for some future time, too.
Okay, anytime you need to make a motion in the mayor's seat or take some action rather than just running the meeting, you can always pass the gavel to her and then participate as a regular council member.
Most of us probably began to serve being, I would say ledably, but thinking that the chair couldn't make a motion. That was particularly just, well, none of us, none of us, because we could always relinquish the gavel. But that was particularly addressed in our ethics commissions this year that the chair could make a motion. But it's not the best thing, but we can do it what you say. Okay, sir. Thank you, Ms. Carter. Okay, Mr. Sims.
Liaison.
Huh? Oh, liaisons. Let me address that just a minute. Do we need liaisons? Don't we need one of us talk to whoever we need to? If I need to, I need to talk to, if I need to talk to our recreation, I do. If I need to talk to her, fire chief, I do. If I need to talk to her, well, Tim, Tim Shreets and Warren and everything else. We never have a liaison with board on anything. We don't have a liaison, not not much. We have a few times. And I'm good with us having them, but are we, are they effective? Are we doing anything?
Are we required to have?
Uh-uh.
But we're not required, just try it one year without?
Two years, yeah.
Two years without?
Well, now, we can change that.
Well, we can, yeah, we can.
You could change that. We would nation would be. What do you think, John? Now, you're over recreation, but what you, do you ever tell them what to do?
I sure don't.
Yeah, I know you support them a lot. I know you're to the game and stuff, but.
That's my pastime, is one of them, so, yeah, I just support them. But no, I don't, if they doing their job, I don't fool with them, okay? I mean, they come to me and ask me something, and they don't, and they don't, so that's a problem. We'd be better just as well off without them as we as well are with them.
We started doing this many years ago, kind of shadowing the county. But the county has sometimes those commissioners they're appointed to other boards as directing them like that, so they they then made themselves liaisons to the road department, the parks and parks and things like that. And it worked some, but now when you have to do like tri-county, community council, council, like different boards that you have to, then you have to. But if if we're, I'm like Ms. Carter, let's try a term.
Yeah.
Let's try a term of that.
Yeah.
Because neither of us, neither one of us runs the department. We got to use that terminology. I'm over that department. Well, we're the members of the board, and we're not necessarily over anything. Do you see, you've been here continuously, don't any of us, do you see?
No, the only reason we used to do it was because that council member got paid out of that account, you know? Everybody's paid out of the annual funds now. We've got our quick with changes, but everybody's paid out of the annual funds, it doesn't matter, man.
I forgot that payroll thing.
Yeah, we don't do it anymore.
Okay, all right, let's do it that way then. Okay, now, Mr. Sims.
Do we need to make that a motion?
I think that'd be, that'd be good, just not to middle of the vote.
I believe that.
Well, I'll make that motion then.
Okay. Ms. Carter has made a motion that we, for the next term, that for the next year, that we do not have liaisons and that we'll address it in the future if it needs to be. Is there a second to the motion?
I'll say.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion on the motion? How you vote, Ms. Carter?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Mr. Watsonham?
Yes.
Okay.
You'll run or we'll sit?
I'll talk to John.
You'll run and say something, we do.
I'm only teasing. Updates on Scott and legislative incentives. So Ms. Riley sent me the information that y'all blocked the last year with the legislative appropriations. There's a lady in our office that is handling that grant. What I plan on doing is finalizing that, sending it back to you for approval or whoever wants it. I mean, you can disperse it how you wish to review it. And that goes to the House and the Senate, and those are due February the 7th or 8th?
Somewhere along there.
I think it's the 7th or the 8th, but that, I mean, we'll get that in hopefully by next week. And I'll get that back to you and upon y'all's approval, we'll see that you, we'll get that submitted. My question on that is, is did you guys submit that or do you want me to?
Y'all submit it.
Okay, so just send it to the representative.
I will sign it and send it back. I worry we're going to do it, send it back to you.
Well, next week, once that's finalized, we'll discuss that, and I'll copy you mean on any emails that I send out. Scott, those are due March 17th. Y'all wanted me to apply for, Craig McMoran had not started this one, it's third, and there's another one.
Second.
Second and third, okay. So I have not started those, those are due, that I'll jump on that. I probably will call on you, Margaret, maybe next week, just so I probably will send you a location map with the limits for your approval upon y'all's. I mean, if that's what y'all agree on the day y'all talked about at last meeting, but we need to adopt a resolution that allows y'all to apply for M. Scott for the fiscal year 2023. And I could draft that and send to you, and we can do that at the next meeting, which is February the 16th, I believe.
Somewhere along there.
So while I'll do that, I'll get a bit of resolution. And Mr. Jeff, I probably get your email address, and maybe Margaret can
Absolutely.
copy of an email.
I'll get that.
That way, you know, y'all can review it, and you make sure the resolution is good with you. I don't know how Cliff did it in the past, but we work this as he does. I mean.
We want to do it the way Jonathan did.
Well, I just, I don't know if you want to see it. I don't think it'll have issues.
My boys do, Margaret, Ford's, and Tubby.
Okay, I figure you may want to see it, you may not. I don't, I, again, I just want to send it to whoever wants to see it.
I literally never had to change one for y'all's shop ever.
They reviewed it.
It's all right that you don't change it, but I think we
Oh, you definitely, I may need to be reviewed just to check that box, but I mean, it's
Well, and I'm probably going to use a template that I've used that have been, that has been perfect everywhere else, but there may be some language that you want and y'all wish.
Sure.
Regardless, I just want everybody to be aware, and I've seen that before. I'll do that next week and get that to you so it can be put on the agenda for next month. I'll just send in and that, you agree upon that resolution and that, and we can apply for M. Scott, which is due March 17th. And that's, that's through DOT. That's really all the updates I have. Unless y'all have questions on anything. I do have one question about M. Scott, but not this year. So last year, y'all got Jefferson and
Jackson.
Jackson. Have y'all gotten a agreement from DOT on these two, right?
No, we won't get one till July, they say.
See, there's something.
Because this is 2024 fiscal year, what we're applying for now will be 2025 fiscal year. So factor in those increases that's going to happen between now and 2025.
Okay, well.
Yeah, that's what you told me, we won't get a contract from them till
I know some of our counties and cities have started to get some, you know, but
We have.
That's scary, you haven't, that doesn't.
No, we haven't.
And it's just maybe as they do them, they're probably sending them, and they've done a lot, and they've funded several last year, so. Whatever you do to that, just make a mental note or a note to send that to me so I can have it, and and the mayor will draft a task order, so I, I just don't want that to be kicked down the road. Whenever you get that, I will jump on it. I don't want that to be pushed. You know, obviously, there's survey had to be done, and that takes time. It all takes time, so when you get it, it's certainly better, get it to me, it's certainly better for us, too. So I believe that's it. That's all the update I have, unless you guys have any questions or?
And just for clarification, the legislative incentives, months, appropriations, we're asking for the possum palace phase two of that. We did hear full notification that we cannot use CDVG funds on that building for a period of five years.
Wow.
So if we don't get this funding, the building may be brought down by five years, you know? Because it's, that's it, we can't use.
It sure looks good.
Or everybody gets it.
Yeah, yeah, it sure looks good. One of the things for the future, and I don't know if it'll be CDVG or what, but I go to other communities, that they, their their central focus, like our Possum Palace, whatever their place is, they have good level well-drained working place.
That's part of the
And many, many times it's paved, it is.
Yeah, it's part of the signal for the
Okay, I'm going to say, I think we need to, we need, if you walk down there, it's it's really a trail, waiting for an over knee or ankle or heel or something.
And I could be wrong, but did Cliff put in the last time, you know, we got some money out there, did he put in some 88 parking, some handicap parking?
We got the parking spaces, we just didn't get the asphalt or run out of
He poured concrete for the
Yes, sir.
Okay.
We just need the drainage and the
Around everywhere else.
And everywhere else.
Okay. I know he and I rode around twice, that, you know, just to kind of show me what he's done and what y'all blocked, or just to kind of bring up speed, but when you do it all at one time, some of it goes in one hand, out the other, just because you hear so much. And so, okay, I just, I went around and looked at it in the daylight, maybe, you know, February 16th, I come over here a little early, just to check it out and look at it, but.
And if we could, if you move some of us to go with you, we'd be glad to just walk around.
Okay.
Second and third, that's from Jefferson to Piney. And
Third is from 77.
Third is just a little piece, right?
Little piece, yeah.
Third is from 77 to
To Jefferson.
Jefferson.
And then second
Jackson.
Or Jackson, sorry.
I meant Jack, I meant Jackson.
And then second was supposed to be from
Jackson
Yeah.
To Piney.
I should have said Jackson both times, not Jefferson.
Right.
Yeah, it crosses Jefferson, but now, we've got one in Jefferson, don't we?
We just got a drainage park. There'll be just a little bit of pavement on each side of the
On Second Avenue? So y'all got money to replace, there's two, I think, 48-inch drawstrings, have all that are busted. We're going to take those out, put in a bigger box, I mean, a box folder, if you will, a large, whatever, I'm doing a drainage study on it, I'm about done. I'm actually waiting, ask another question. I had, not necessarily this meeting, but I know you're waiting on the agreements or
They gave, they gave us the okay the other day to preliminary execute the engineering contract.
Okay.
So we're, we're, I think I'll be posted to you next week, signed.
Okay, well, I just, we're, we've started, we have, I kind of, guys and models, I'm like, hey, let's pump the brakes a bit, just because I didn't want to get the car ahead of the horse, but it sounds like since we're, we're ready, I don't think that'll be a major undertaking.
Yeah, just contact, touch base with Mr. Fred and Melissa.
Okay.
All in Missland, Melissa.
Okay.
And see where we're at on that.
All right.
We don't have something on Jefferson. We don't have a, because we're talking to Cliff about seeing if we could extend it
And that's in the Scott project.
You're talking about extending that down past the
Past the pass?
Yes, down into the other main, what's the, how, the Piney Road?
Far, far. Far as that
Far as that Right, he did tell me that now. So with that, the original agreement and what the scope was, they didn't think, they say no, but that's something else we give the agreement on. And again, Jefferson or Jackson?
Jefferson.
Jefferson.
Jefferson. Yeah, I think you said something a while ago, where I heard, I heard something you didn't say. When I asked about Jefferson, did they go with some research and stuff down to, or are they gone?
All the way. Jefferson's our Scott project.
Okay.
Yeah, it's all the way.
Jefferson, we've already gone.
We already got it.
Okay, all right, we're talking about, we're talking about second and third
For 2025.
Okay, all right, I just
I'm sorry, I, no, I may not have clarified, I'm sorry. I probably just jumped into the new one and
Okay, no, that's, that's good, that's good. But that's standing at Jefferson, right there front of Bruce's
And all that
Road line, home down toward TD's Home Place, that's, that is just about coming apart. I have a question for Mr. Sims.
And one other thought I've just had on your dirt roads, and you got anything updated on your mitigation?
We got the contract signed, last week, we sent it back to, for state signature.
So you're waiting on it, that may be a little bit
Yeah, it's going to be a little bit on it. You know, the state Florida, don't know that.
Well, there's been so much turnover, you know, I don't
We get a new grant manager just about every
That's been every county and city I've been in.
We have infrastructure meetings every other week, we have a new grant manager just about every other week.
Yeah, that's, it's, it's making it difficult.
It's making
Especially the center of that.
I don't know.
It's making it hard on you, it's hard to know who to email, and I feel your pain, it's making it harder, and it's hard on this, too, it's pushing everything back. So I said
But on those drainage and well projects, our grant manager now is a civil engineer, so.
Who, what's his name?
Her name.
Her name.
And she is very to the T everything, that's why we have a so good time with the engineering contract.
And that's for the, that's for the, out the well to be replaced and the piping and and Second Avenue drainage.
Yeah.
Well, Second Avenue will be, that would be a big skate. I mean, that should not be real hard to, like I said, do that drainage study, we're almost do that drainage study. We're almost done. I mean, we're, see, we've already come here and measured. I've already got stuff put in a model, so... That's, the computers will do some work for us on those. But just trying to get the basin and the size, I will, maybe attempt at the, I don't know what the size will be, but we'll make it, eliminate as much as possible, as big as we can put there. I know Cliff told me that room floods regularly.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Are you, are you going to settle now or you need to leave?
I was gonna leave, but I can say...
If the, if the council will let me have, have my end of the meeting thing, oh, you're still here, Mr., or you're still here, could I, could I address, uh, one thing?
And I typically would say, I just have my six minutes all week, so I'll come along.
And this is something we can do at any, most any meeting, we'll file, file the two of yours here. Uh, uh, the Rogers Square, that's the name. Uh, I know there's ADA things and lots of stuff like that. Uh, could we ask Jonathan or New Bay, or, or, who, is there someone that we can get that will go down and kind of give us that? Uh, somebody that can tell us if there's some grants that are available to do anything? With the coming years, folks may want to start renting that and have it open air, family reunion or something like that.
Where was that at?
Uh, the, it's right on the corner, went into the, into the, uh, Fossum Palace area there. That, that building's got shit. It's got a bathroom, it's got a sink, it's got a few amenities in it, but I know they're not ADA.
But you're all trying to make it any accessible, so...
I, I think it, I think we, we accepted it and then I, and I promoted that we accepted, but I don't want us to have something there that's not one to be, be u, or be available for use. Uh, we could enclose it, maybe. We could make a, like a sunroom, enclose it with windows, or enclose it with, you know, we could do something, but everything you do costs money. And if they've got some rent funding in there or something like that, our fund is probably not gonna let us do a lot of stuff. Uh, so...
We, uh, we're closing out two FODA fronts.
I would say FODA would be the first of all.
That would be, you know, you could bring in ADA from out there and you could do with some other stuff. As long as you put some playground, put, you know, a little park area there, you know, maybe one piece of playground equipment, some fencing, you know, we need fencing, whether they're on seventy-seven. And you could probably, you know, those are fifty thousand dollars. You could probably get some of that, most of that done for fifty thousand dollars there, you know?
And inmates.
And inmates. We do all our grants with inmates.
When I've heard that come up again, I'm not asking you to commit it tonight, but when I've heard that...
That cycle opens back up. Those applications will do October fifteenth. They have been for the last five, six days.
Yeah, and they, we'll close ours out in April, so we'll be eligible to apply again.
Yep. We don't need another ball field. We don't need another skateboard. We don't need a, we don't need a lot of things, but if we can get some grants and make something that the whole public, that the whole community could use, can we think about FODA being something that we look at, and I'm not asking for commitment now, that will be it? Could we, maybe between now and October, whenever the cycle starts, could we think about that?
We'll think about it.
Yeah, okay.
So, yeah, that, that, right, you'll have to close it out by June the thirtieth. I think the structure has been done in August or April.
Yeah.
And it closes out June the thirtieth, and then from there, if you have none open within the city...
We can apply for two.
You can apply for two, as long as it's different parks.
Yeah, well, as long as it's like a phase one, phase two or something like that, you know?
Okay, okay. But, yeah, I mean, I, I, I do think, if it, I, I have, without looking at it, sight unseen, you know, fifty thousand dollars, you can easily add some things and make it at least more readily accessible to folks. You know, maybe be ADA compliant, you know, but you have to do two things.
Yeah, it, it's really, really, uh, visible, but when you come up with something like that, you give me a call, I'll, I'll go.
Maybe let's, maybe this next, next meeting, let's just meet thirty minutes, thirty minutes early, let's just go check it out. Let's go walk in and show me what you're thinking and...
Is that alright with the council?
Everyone wants to be involved, can, but we just, yeah, a good thirty minutes early and...
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Yep.
Anybody else have anything for Mr. Sims? Thank you for telling me. We'll see you next month.
Yeah, thank you.
Madam Burke?
Okay, me here.
Oh, I'm sorry. No audience. Are you here this tonight?
There.
Better?
Yeah.
Better than us? Okay. Andrew.
I come to you not as a member of the audience, but as a follow-up on your sound system.
Yes, sir.
I guess the question would be, Nancy, can you hear better?
I can hear it better.
Um, you don't need any equipment. Your equipment's fine. It was just not being used properly. And microphone discipline is gonna be the biggest thing. John asked me to help him...
Yours is in the wrong spot. You need it more around in the front.
But, but it's gonna be microphone discipline that's gonna make the difference. Now, we got one back here. We got one behind, beside you. That one, I've had them removed from the shelf. I'm gonna extend that cable so that for meetings, we can actually put it out here, so that our more mature women will be able to hear what's going, what's going on in the meeting. Uh, so if it sounds good to you now, it's gonna sound...
I can hear what they're saying tonight.
Alright, so...
And mostly if you look out toward the audience and not turn around and look at face to face with each other. When y'all looking at each other, your voices go that way. You need to look out this way.
You meant those ladies way older.
Oh, there's none here tonight. Yeah, no, 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 I'm talking about the sewing circle. So I just wanted to give you that. So I just wanted to give you that.
Do you sew in circle?
I'm, I'm not gonna win this one, so I'm just gonna back out right now.
Yeah, lay the show down.
This basically was an update though, so just let me know what you need going forward, but I'm gonna be moving that speaker, so hopefully it'll just get better from this point on.
Yes.
But you don't need to spend any money.
And thank you for doing that, and if you see what, what we need, I for one would like you to do that. If it's moved that feature or just...
Sure.
Adjust those, move to another place.
Got you covered.
Okay. Okay, uh, Madam Burke?
We have greetings from our insurance company. They, they come out every so often. They do an asset survey, you know? Um, and of things, you know, when they done the last one, our carts had not closed down, stuff like that, you know? And, uh, they have done this survey. It's in your packets and you see all the pictures, the playground equipment, everything, that we were not insuring now, that we would not be covered for in case of a disaster. That would be the sole responsibility of the city to come up with the money for all that, because those are FODA grants and you have to maintain those for twenty-five years from the latest grant. So, but it's gonna be an additional, uh, five thousand two hundred and twenty-three dollars premium due to our, uh, liabilities of our form and, you know, our lawsuits. We're already paying thirty-four thousand dollars a year for insurance and, and we're through the league, and we're gonna stay with the league because we want nobody else to touch us right now. We've had an ongoing suit now, you know, even though, you know, we've got an ongoing suit, the Goodman suit.
I thought that was...
He's still in jail.
And he's still in jail. They said it don't matter because he, he has the right to sue.
That, that's right.
It's a miracle.
I actually thought that. I don't remember that going to, going to fruition. I don't...
It ain't, it's still in the preliminary stages, I think, but we've got a new attorney assigned to it on our behalf. And, uh, but it's still out there. Now, our contention is that we were not notified that anything happened at the Fossum Palace. So therefore, you know, if our, one of our people or there are anybody's up there that gets hurt, and we're notified right then to go up there, we go, but they also throw a bullet when they get to the hospital. That was not done, and that was not done. I feel like it's usually...
And we see not, and I know that, uh, volunteers and people on the street, is our, do, do we have liability? If it, if it isn't something that we knew was wrong, hadn't addressed, like, is, is there, is there liability for me just walking across here and falling down?
No, sir. The way that's called the business invitee rule, and it's, we only have to disclose and keep up with things beyond reasonable regular maintenance, but disclose and maintain things that we know of are a problem. So, and by disclosure, that could be, you know, spray paint on, oh, a cracked sidewalk that's lifted up. Somebody could catch their toe on, or actual police tape or a cone, or tell them with a sign. There's a lot of ways to disclose that, but if it, if it wasn't an open and obvious thing and we didn't know about it, then... I mean, they'll still sue you, and I'm not saying that that won't happen, but as far as how it winds up in court when it's disposed of by the judge or jury, your, your duty is limited a little bit.
Yeah. This was not something like that. As a matter of fact, it was said inflicted, well, I wasn't there.
Nobody was.
Paul said to me, makes it sound like it was sort of sick and figure. He was on the extended, uh, she brought legs and things like that, and tried to step on the table or off of the table.
Something, I don't know.
And...
I mean, if I were defending that, that'd be a huge assumption of risk argument and contributory negligence on his part, among other things. You know, when you make a bad decision, it contributes to your own harm.
Yeah.
The law does give us a break on that.
If you drink and drive, you're probably gonna be a risk or may have an accident or, you know, it's, yeah.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
But if you remember, right, I heard there was one down on Fifth Avenue several years ago that they parked on our rideaway. They used our rideaway for the driveway and parked on it, but then when she stepped off the curb of our rideaway and fell down, she sued us. And we paid out. She had Edward Borowski.
So you're saying now that this, all this photos we see is not...
Will be, it's not covered right now. Uh, and, you know, it's gonna go up again next year, but we've got, you know, forty-eight thousand dollars worth of lights out there at George Brothers Park, you know?
It gives me pause, especially the playground equipment, you know? That's part of these pictures, or that's concluded, that's not currently insured, you said?
Yes.
So, yeah, how much money are you saying?
Five thousand dollars of extra premium.
Uh, than what it was?
Right now, yes. This is starting November one. So it'll be prorated from October to November. We'll have one month there, but, and, but this is the premium. It's gonna be the insurer.
Well, you know, we, we really can't afford...
We can't afford not to do it.
You know, it's, uh...
That would be my opinion. If the city has the funds and its budget, you just almost have to, if you can.
We, we live in that type of world now. I hate to say it, but we do.
Every day.
You know, it's just, just that.
Okay, when we, when we, when we talk about, and I'm saying, I'm saying fences and parking lots and areas like that and, uh, equipment. Uh...
And then you know...
And I know this may be, this may be altogether different. I, I certainly have a little understanding of insurance, but when I insure, when I get home as insurance, I don't have to, I don't have to count my bed and refrigerator and all that yet. Why, when I, we say, in the past, when we said we want insurance on this playground, this playground, why did that not cover everything that's on that playground? You don't know that.
I don't know that.
Have you had a policy before that has excluded certain elements in the playground?
No.
Okay.
No, but they, these were not, these were, most of these were not listed when Michael came through, you know? And they are, these insurance companies are getting tough on having to pay out, you know?
Oh, they are.
Yeah.
Because they'll break it down by location.
They do, yeah.
I've worked with that quite a bit, especially post-Michael, and they'll look at it location by location. And so anything that's not described specifically is, is excluded, even though it may say blanket playgrounds, plural.
Mm-hmm.
You've got to break them out, or they'll have an argument. Now, you may have mediation or lawsuit against them. You may get that money, but they'll make you fight for it.
So if that, if that were, so if we had, uh, a bench or a picnic table and, and benches, and, uh, we had a sliding board, a swing set out there, we, we gotta insure that?
No, sir. As long as it's on site and reasonably attached, you know, temporally, like in physically, geographically, however you wanna say it, with those, that other equipment that's there.
Mm-hmm.
Not say way over there as part of an arguable other facility or on another parcel or something.
Mm-hmm.
You wouldn't have to keep up with to that level of detail of just adding small elements.
Okay, and just from my understanding, I'm thinking you're saying different from that. I think you're saying that these pictures here got to be identified and insured.
Well, it's, uh, we got, you know, uh, one of, one of the Cabo, the backup and the tractor, you know?
Uh-huh.
All that's on here, and as new, uh, you know, uh, this is on here now. These, the wheelhouses and storage houses, they're on here already. This is just ensuring, you know, we got some help for FEMA on our ball field lots last time, but our ball field lots were not insured, you know? That's, we got FEMA money for a little bit, but not enough to do them, you know?
Mm-hmm.
The ball field lot...
That's, that's what I'm understanding. The ball field is insured, the lights is part of the ball field?
No, no.
I thought, is the ball field insured on our general liability coverage and something else? Or, I mean, there's no replacement?
Our property is...
There's no, I mean, because how, what would they be covering? I guess fencing essentially, turf, that kind of thing. So accessory structures and the lights should be, if they're connected to the fence somehow. Let's say the light was bolted to the fence just with a collar, and I, and it really is just kinda like if you have a claim for your fence. If it's bolted to your house with two L brackets, that fence becomes a part of that structure. If a, if an adjuster comes out there and takes a bunch of pictures and we have it bolted and down, they'll consider that fence separate and they exclude it, and I think that will be the argument for the lights. But I don't know for sure without reading the policy.
Same way in building a house, if you call for it ain't...
Yes, sir, it's gotta be attached.
That should be attached, you know?
It becomes a fixture of the main, of the main...
Well, if, uh, that's interesting. And when I say, if that's, that's affirming, that's not questioning, if that's...
So if is good, because I have a certain policy.
If, if, if what you're saying is correct, then, then, uh, the swings, the slides, the picnic table, they're not going into a fence or to anything else, and, and we do this playground, all of those pieces of, if I fall off the slide, I'll merry-go-round.
That's not our liability.
Well, right, and that's, that's where my...
That's not our property.
Right, it's different between property hazard and liability, two different coverages.
Okay, I may be mixing apples and oranges. And so, so this is to replace property?
Mm-hmm.
Replace, replace the lights, replace the swing, replace the...
Yes, sir. That's right.
Okay.
I did wanna back up, maybe if I could, the one comment, so, you know, if you added a bench or something, would that have to be made? Now, if you added something substantive, like a new piece of playground equipment, like say one of those merry-go-round type things that are, they outlawed now, you would never be able to put one in and get covered because too many kids got pulled under. But something like that that's arguably dangerous, that would be something that you would want the carrier to know about. Because if a child got hurt on, or a person got hurt on that, then, and they didn't know about it and it wasn't explicitly covered, it might not be covered for that either.
Yeah.
Now, a picnic table or a bench, I wouldn't view the same way.
Yeah. Okay, and you're backing up to a lot of it.
Backed up, that's what I was, and I was, I was, I was not separating my ability in part.
Okay, okay, yes, sir. Pretty good. Okay, so, so you're, you're telling us that this used to cost us more?
Yes, sir.
Do you...
We need to...
You're getting, that's just what I are doing with you.
No, we need to take action on it.
We need to take action on it. Okay, we have a request to increase our insurance by fifty-five hundred dollars.
About two, something, two hundred and thirty.
Yeah?
I said, was it from Cospus?
Yes, to ensure all these, uh, I mean, look, there's quite a few stuff that's insured, you know, there's a lot, forty pages all again.
Yeah, I've seen that, yeah. And it's probably good that they came out and found it before we have a claim or, or have a lawsuit.
That's right, yeah. These usual suspects that go after cities without naming names. We know that they all over. That one lady in Tallahassee and Mr. Alborowski, that's some of the others.
And there's a new one over there.
They're always looking, you know?
There was a new one over there. We told us about, in ethics, was it?
Yeah.
She played the...
Yeah.
She don't like him, she's like...
Yeah, she, she's kind of...
Oh, a new, uh, attorney that takes these litigation cases, you know?
Yeah, she's been just a few, Ms., was it Ms. Rodriguez?
Yes, it was, it was. She don't like Matt Hishell.
She is a protege of, of, uh, Ms. Maddox.
Ms. Maddox is...
With us a few times.
With us a few times.
She is famous and panhandle with me, this power is a cow, he's...
She is gracious. Okay, so we need a motion to, uh, increase our...
Add on the asset survey results.
To, to, to accept, to, to accept them and modify the, and, and increase the plan, okay? Need a motion to accept the, uh, asset review and modify our insurance premium to code.
I made that motion.
We have a motion of Ms. Carter's, her second?
Second.
A motion and a second. Need a discussion of a motion? The chair vote, she is, is false now?
Yes.
Ms. Carter?
Yes.
Okay, and I gave y'all some wrong information the other day. You can't believe that I made a mistake, can y'all?
After all these years.
Uh, we're going to get some recovery funds for motorfield taxes. We haven't got those funds yet, but they won't be subject to anything. And I had missing vertically imported our CBG, CBG funds to, for our final closeout to y'all. Some of y'all is that amount. We don't have the amount yet. We just got notified, notified cash out from the Department of Revenue that we will be getting some motorfield taxes, because last year our local option gas taxes and all were cut. Our local option gas tax was cut down to around fifty dollars a month, you know, uh, when they done some, whatever the governor did with...
That gas, that the gas tax...
Relief, yeah.
Petition or whatever it was.
Yes, sir. But we're gonna, we're gonna get some funds, and we're, we're supposed to post them to our account in January, so at the February meeting, we'll let you know how much they are.
Okay, those can only be used on streets?
On streets, of course.
Now, how long has it, how long has it been since we have done this meeting with the county where we do appropriate?
We just, uh, sent that information to them, uh, last year, I think, so a few years.
Because with this street payment, we're doing all that, our, our share, our percentage of the total expenditure in the county goes up, so we ought to get a little bit more money out of, by, by doing these repairs. We ought to get more money because of that. Okay, uh, on recovery funds and things like that, we never have gotten any cares money.
Yeah.
Think, think we never will. Is there any, is there any avenues left to us on cares money?
I'm not aware of any.
Okay.
No, sir.
Is there any other Michael or, uh...
We have that.
Is, is there any other monies that we haven't pursued?
No, sir. We've got them all. I think I'm about to kill them. I do nothing but grants.
I've never seen the money released, that was released after Michael. If Michael had hit in New Orleans or Miami, Andrew was a much smaller storm, but much more specific because Michael went to, let's walk later. If it, if it had hit a major metropolitan area, they'd been a gazillion dollars before, so, you know?
That's bad.
You know, and, but I've never seen the amount of money released in many different areas as, as COVID and Michael combined.
Of the small, you just felt it's, and small.
Small, small. They have been many, turn loose, turn loose. I just want to make sure that we got all of them.
Everyone that comes through, I'll call them.
Okay, okay.
For something.
Alright, go ahead, please.
Okay, we need to set the date and time for the annual fun day and Christmas parade. The fun day is always the first Saturday in August. Uh, this year, we moved the Christmas parade from the second Saturday in December to the first Saturday in December. That, that may have been a good day for the town. It may have done, but it, a lot of our parade participants and the pancake breakfast could not do it that day because it's just conflicts with the city of Lynn Haven, town of City Beach. City of Chipley had, they had ice skating, I can see Chipley, you know, so we couldn't compete. But that's up to y'all. I haven't had any direction from the development club, and if we want to do this in February, we can just tailor it and talk with them and see what, and the fire department, or at the workshop, we can talk about it, you know? See what everybody wants to get together and do.
Well, it's good, to me, it's good to set a date and keep it. I mean, uh, you know, uh, you know, then you, people's got a year to plan for that date, you know, from year to year. I know it messed up a lot. This, this last year messed up a lot of organizations that could have been here, and I can, I can name some of them, but I ain't, but, uh, but it messed up a lot, uh, um, I'll just say that.
I, I like it being where it always was because most people also is already about that, or they're... I like it being where it always was because lots of people also worried about that on their annual calendar as well.
Like the front of a van, you know?
We didn't have vans, we didn't have a lot of things. My preference would probably be to do it like we always did. I'm being sensitive to what the club's doing for the town, they're doing a lot right now. They, they rejuvenated, reinvigorated or something, and we don't.
They have, yeah.
We don't want to stop any of that. I heard several, in the course of the holidays, think that we ought to do that, but whatever best we can.
I see, you know, the fire department, yeah, they wasn't, of course, they were going through changes.
Yeah.
And they were not asked about when the parade was going to be, and they do the parade, you know?
Yeah, yeah.
But they wanted to have input on it, and so did, so does the development club and the town, using it on.
Ms. Carter? Come in.
Well, I think we should wait and talk to the development club and the, and the fire department. Coordinate with them.
Good night. We've got plenty of time.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, we got plenty of time.
Would you please arrange?
Okay.
All right, sure. Okay, Sarah Porter, Porter workshop. This should be in February? Think we want to do it before the regular meeting? Or like we've been doing the second, Thursday in the month at five p.m.?
I said, did you bring that calendar back in? Are you, please?
I was going to bring it on here, but I didn't, sir.
Thank you.
This can be either February or March, June or July, or maybe since then, February.
Our next meeting's the sixteenth. Do we want to have it before, so if anything comes up from some of our department heads, we can vote on it at the next, next, at the February meeting? Or do we want to have it after that, so that we've got less preparation? We've got full of time spread out before the next meeting, which could then be in March?
I'm neutral, don't be too mad at me. That's my, it just don't matter.
It don't matter, man. Are you talking about having it like, if our next meeting is the sixteenth, having it like at four o'clock instead of five? Are you talking about having it on Tuesday or Thursday?
Something like that, maybe even. What, what do we have in that relationship, Karen?
That Monday and Tuesday before is not good for you.
Uh, we've been having them.
We've got Uber night.
After the, after.
After our meetings.
We've been having after the end of the quarter, the first month after the end of the quarter, which first, end of the quarter was December. So we didn't have it in January, we had it in February.
Okay. So we want to have it, we want to have it in January, haven't we?
Well, no, we really don't.
We just about run out, we just about run out of January.
Well, we usually have it. We have it in February and then.
Three months later, three months later, okay.
Well, you have it like on the second Thursday before the regular meeting on the next week. But that's two nights, so tie y'all.
Well, she said they couldn't come these days.
And this is a regular meeting right here.
She said Rodgerdale couldn't come these days.
We got a Uber night, at town doctors.
Doctors are formed, but Sunday and Tuesday.
So let's just have it tonight.
On the night? Is that okay with you?
What's the night on Thursday?
It's a week before the council meeting.
Five p.m. or four p.m.?
Let's make five, somebody Carol can meet you. Is that good for you?
It is.
What time?
Five.
She actually has her cardiologist's doctor's perform at that day, but it's, it's going to be just a routine, we'll be back.
You'll be back by five?
Yeah. We're trying to, I told her, I go, I say, let's get on our doctors same, if we're going to be able to read on time, let's get them all the same week and then the next week.
I got too many.
Yeah. Yes, yes, yes. She's at my car, parts availability is.
You and Paul are going to be in trouble.
We got to get a car. Okay, the night's at five?
At five, yes, sir.
All right, go ahead. Is that, is that good for you?
Yeah.
Okay.
We need to set our cleanup weeks for 2023. We get four this year, so we need one in spring, summer, fall, and winter. We've been doing like the, you know, the last weeks, like the last, the last week of March. Last week of June, last week of September, and the last week of December. Is that fine with everybody?
Yeah, that's good times.
I think that's good. All those little weeks, right?
Yeah, that'd be four weeks, yes, sir.
That's good. I don't know if I miss anything, but I come out here and I see those two drunkards, I heard, I don't know.
We have four and they have four.
Yeah, and, and some of it may be from out of town, and I don't know that either. But those, those actually used.
Better there than on the side of the road.
It is, yeah.
But that's no hazardous material, correct? No paints or anything like that?
There can be empty paintings, and we send it to you while we can and can't.
Right, right.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, meeting times. Ms. West has started a new job. She's on probation there for three months. Her new job is, she went from the council agent in Washington County to the council agent in Holmes County. And she does two days a week that she has to work till five. And one of those days is Thursday, so she's in West Hill. So she gets off at five, but she, you know.
Can't be here.
About here, about five, you know? But, you know, when you're elected, it's not required that you even attend the meeting, you know? And if, she said after three months, she could probably get a change, or she could be off for the meetings, you know? And she may feel comfortable doing that before that, but I wanted to discuss if y'all want to change the meeting time to six o'clock? Or, or just keeping like they are for time being, see how it goes?
Well, I'd like to say now, she don't have to attend the meetings, is that correct? Is that what you said?
Is there a limit on how many she can use? Or we can dismiss them all?
I don't know what the limit is on the number, but I would say it couldn't be a regular thing. She would need to call in at least, just set up a phone conference line for it.
Okay.
Can we, and we could, I mean, you can do that indefinitely. As long as, you know, it's available, the meeting is available to other people who want to call in or show up. But if it's, if it's one of us and who's remote and the meeting is still happening in person, you don't have to provide, you know, a conference call in line for the. It could go for any of y'all, me, whomever. One of the employees, if they need to appear before the board.
I really, really like five o'clock.
I do, too.
As much as, as much as the council over the years has accommodated some of my needs, I would, I would not be opposed to accommodating three months or something like. Could we do that, could we change for three months to six o'clock and change back? Or do we get into a lot of?
Well, I would, for notice issues, yes, sir. I would say for the year and week. And another kind of middle of the way, or middle of the road way to look at it, she could also call in on her way here if she wanted to come straight here. But now Wes will make it, she made this half or all of the meetings, it's a short meeting, it'll depend on traffic and all that. But if you're only talking about three meetings, maybe not. Maybe she could be able to help anyway.
Yeah, and this is one of them?
Yes.
Oh, just two after this.
Sure, after this.
Yeah, if she could work that out, that'd be great.
If she missed one entirely, a second one entirely, if you called in for a third one, that'd be okay.
Should, should the, should the two of us be gone, but there's three council? Can they pick a litter that even among themselves?
You could, you could designate a secondary mayor, pretend for that, so that to me, you could go forward.
Yes, sir. Okay. Would one of you like to, like to be that secondary, pretend? I don't, that's probably a very unusual happening, because I'd try to coordinate my absences that are just, you know, non-mercy kind of thing, and I'm sure that she would, but.
Typically, if you saw the mayor and the mayor pretend both out, you would just cancel that meeting? Under, for some kind of extraordinary circumstance?
Would you like to do it that way, or?
And that's also two fitters of a board, so I think that's probably a good idea.
Okay, okay, I think, can you convey to?
I will.
Ms. West, how we can handle this? I think if she's, I think to keep herself current, that the call in, if she can listen to us, whether she chimes back in or not, she can listen to us while she's driving. And that would serve all of our legal accommodations for, okay?
Yes, sir.
Let's, let's do that then, and let's stay at five o'clock. Five o'clock is just, six, six o'clock, six o'clock lecture here. With a long meeting, with a lot of guests, it'll make you go to seven thirty, five o'clock can get you out. About that, the news is all just bad. Okay. Is that it?
Yes, sir.
You don't have one more thing? Okay.
Oh, yeah, I did. I, I just, I just, I want to give some kudos out to our utility billing clerk. She is dedicated, she's, we have only got two customers that are age four plus, and one of those has a payment agreement with us that y'all voted down, and the other one, she's going to be cut off end of the month. But you look at these, we only have fourteen hundred dollars in the, in the.
So it's down to fourteen hundred dollars?
It's very. But anyway, but anyway, she has worked diligently and, you know, I give praise where praise is due, and she does.
Yeah.
She'll ask me, do I need you? I said, just come on, come on. But now, given the LIFAP for the state of Florida, the EO, has paid ninety percent of these people's bills. And they pay up to one thousand dollars a year to each customer once they're approved, just for water. Now, they see I've fed their garbage, but on there, we have some that's got five hundred dollars credited on water, you know, just because they, we.
You have ways of paying the bills?
Yes, we do.
So actually, when that bill goes down, it's only garbage. It's about thirty dollars, like a third of garbage, it is, oh my goodness.
Yeah, but like I say, ninety percent of our customers that was on that delinquent list are, were qualified for the LIFAP, and when we finally got it, you know, we were starting, we were doing that. When Robin was here with the state, never got it up, and then Tri County never got it, but we've got it in place now. And that's how our reports look as good as they do, and we have a lot of people made believer out of them.
Well, that's good.
But the LIFAP is a blessing to these people here that, and y'all, if you see any paperwork on these people that qualify for that program, you wonder how they make it anyway, you know, if, you know.
Well, thank her for it.
I do, and I would thank her.
Now, when is her probation?
April, the April meeting, y'all are about to take her off probation.
We'll have her here.
No, she needs to do. She'll stay, y'all better be.
I, I will say that, like when I come to sign checks or letters or something like that, and she breaks, when does she go? Her personality is, is good at the window, is good with the papers, I think.
It is, and there are two types. Sometimes she tries to let her look too fast on things when I'm not here on the days I'm on. And she needs to call me about instead of acting on, but she's, she's, we've, we've worked through that, and we've talked about that. And so I think we've got all that strength now. Thank you.
You said so?
Yes, sir.
You said so.
Okay.
That is really.
Where should I be now, Mr. Parkinson?
Here, Mr. Watson, you have a task to manage?
No.
You have a chart?
No, I'm good.
Ms. West is not here, and I, I want to have one thing. We, those that were able to go, we had a wonderful time at the, at the Christmas activities with the fire department. But we do know now that Mr. Rude has, has retired, has severed his relationship with the, our ordinance says that he is, and we've actually already appointed a new, a new chief and things like that. Our ordinance says that that position is treated as or is an employee of the, of the town. So as such, whatever helps the fire department, if anything, they do to, to honor him, and that's one thing that I think that probably as, as a retiring employee, if you will, that we ought to do something for Mr. Rude. He's been chief, Mr. Finch was our former chief, and he passed, I would say it was nineteen ninety-eight or nine.
But I started in ninety-seven, and he was on here a couple of years.
Yeah. Well, that's when he does work, he built our biggest front porch, and he did one other job after that, and passed on the job that he was working on. And that was in, I think, ninety-nine. So, but what lots of folks don't know, and I'll share with the first mention with the county, then the Fire Chiefs Association was meeting, Mr. Finch never attended those. He sent Sam, for years before Sam became chief, he was the spokesperson for the fire department and for the town in those meetings. And I think that perhaps that we should at least pack appreciation. Don't know what to, or sort of go watch or anything, but I think we ought to do something to acknowledge his years.
And we're working on getting his years up.
And I used to be like this, and Mr. Rude and I have, have crossed swords a few times, always walked away friends and things like that. But I was always like this with the commissioners, they'd be talking about an employee, and I say, well, here's two things. They didn't want to give a raise, they didn't want him to do something like that. I said, well, here's two things, if he ain't, if he ain't doing what he's supposed to, let's get rid of him. And if he is, then you got to feed him like you do everybody else, and when the raise is coming, I'm like, yeah. So we never chose, we never come to the place where we thought of getting rid of Mr. Rude. Because I think he, he has a, he has a knowledge and his heart for law and service is genuine. So I think we ought to acknowledge him some way. That, that's my opinion. If the council feels differently, then we will certainly, certainly go that way. In comment?
Father, we're going to just have a little ceremony or something here after a meeting?
I think so, I don't, I don't think.
Take a gift.
Take a gift and gift and plaque and maybe a gift card, a flag and a gift card.
That would be good.
Yeah, I think.
We start all the plaques over the years from the fire department.
I'm, we do.
Roger were the flag.
Can you make that happen?
I can make that happen.
If I were to, I were, do you want to do the word, you're the, the, do you want to do the word?
We don't have that no more.
Then we can go back to make that actives in big way. If you, if you want to do the word, I, I've done something, the reason she said that is because I've done something for her in the past.
Well, I have not done anything, or don't want to.
Are you satisfied that I do that?
Yes.
Okay. But yeah, sure. I, I, again, I enjoy being here, but I never want the council to feel like that I think that, that, except I'm a team player. Okay, okay, I'll fix you some more to grow a flag and you.
You get it made.
You make sure, when, when we want to do it? Do we, do we want to do it so that Ms. West can be here or do it at?
I'll start it in the spring.
Later in the spring, okay?
In the springtime.
Maybe April or so.
Yeah.
Okay. Our April meeting, would you, and in the meantime, I'll.
I'll get the years.
I'll get to him and see if he's going, see if he'll come.
I'll find him, too.
Yeah, okay. He, he's a unique person. He just, he never had that much for, for the lighting light, but he's always, whatever he thought, that's, he didn't change his mind. Okay, that's all I have. Any?
Mr. Carter?
Nothing for me.
Anything from the audience? We will stand adjourned.